I'd like to call this August 5th meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler? Here. Let the record show that all of our school board members are in attendance for tonight's meeting along with our Division Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our School Board Attorney Ms. Nancy Reeves, our School Board Clerk Carolyn Bowers, along with members of our Division Leadership. At this time, I'll turn things over to our Student Liaison to make some introductions.
Hello. My name is Thomas Perry and I am the new Student Liaison Representative. And I would like to introduce the young man who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today, Mr. E.J. McDaniel. E.J. is an Honorable Student at Spratly Gifted Center, 8th grader. He's a member of the National Honor Society and the Principal's Advisory Board, and is a JV football player at Bethel and participates in community service. And he would like to start out before leading the Pledge of Allegiance by reading to us an inspirational quote.
Attitude by Charles Swindell. "The longer I live, the more I realize the impact of attitude on life. Attitude, to me, is more important than facts, is more important than the past, than education, than money, than circumstances, than failures, than successes, than what other people think, say, or do. It is more important than appearance, giftedness, or skill. It will make or break a company, a church, a home. The remarkable thing is that we have a choice every day regarding the attitude we embrace for that day. We cannot change our past, we cannot change the fact that people will act in a certain way. We cannot change the inevitable. The only thing, the only we can do is play the one string we have, and that is our attitude. I am convinced that life is 10% what happens to me and 90% how I react to it. And so is with you. We are in charge of our attitudes." Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
E.J., if you'll stay up for just a minute, did you have some folks with you tonight that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, ma'am. I had my family with me, my mother, my sister, my dad, my godfather, and my granddad.
And is your principal here, too?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Dr. Crum, thank you for being with us. Would you all stand and be recognized, please? Thank you all for joining us and supporting E.J. as he delivers the invocation tonight. We appreciate so much that you took time out of your summer to come and get our meeting kicked off for us here in August. And I hope, I guess you're already engaged in football practice?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I've been doing it for a while now.
Okay. So, you looking forward to school starting?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Always loved school.
Great. I hope you have an awesome football season and a great school year. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you. And thank you for having me.
We move on to tonight's Consent Agenda, and we have one item, Item 2.01, which consists of the Personnel Report 15-15. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of action, or the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve tonight's Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. We move on now to Superintendent and Staff Reports, and I'll turn things over now to you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this particular time, we would ask for the Public Relations and Marketing update. We'll ask that Mrs. Ina Galata come forward, and she will provide that report and share with us all of the good work that's going on in that particular office.
Great. Good evening, Ms. Galata.
Good evening. Is the microphone on? There we go.
It is.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, School Administrators, and members of our community, I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to share with you an update from the Public Relations and Marketing Department. As a reminder, I'd like to share that there are four different departments working collaboratively to help the Division serve its mission of Every Child, Every Day, Whatever It Takes. This includes Graphics, Athletics, Print Shop and Records Management, and WHCS Television. Our Graphics Department, led by Matt Hauser, serves our classroom teachers, Division Departments and Schools with the designing of posters, flyers, invitations, presentations, and educational manipulatives. They've been very involved in providing supporting materials for the implementation of PBIS. The Graphics Department oversees the division-wide website and provides support to the campus webmasters. In addition, our Division Photographer works in the Graphics Department. As you can see, the department has been very busy completing more than 500 jobs during the 14-15 school year. Matt Hauser and his staff also send out our weekly HCS Email Extra. Our Athletics Department is led by Beth Mayer, who's here tonight, who provides support to our Principals and School Athletic Directors regarding our VHSL activities. Under Ms. Mayer's leadership, we have produced a Coach's Handbook and Concussion Protocol. Our 110 sports teams serve more than 1,300 student athletes, and we have raised $6,000 through corporate sponsors. Ms. Mayer has also added an HCS Athletics Twitter account to better engage students, parents, and fans in our athletics program. You can follow the Athletics Department at hcsathletics1. As you can see on the screen, all of our high schools fared very well in athletics last It's also important to note that three of our four high schools will be changing conferences for the upcoming school year. Marty Wood, who's also here tonight, leads our Printing and Records Management Department, which not only serves our schools and our school division, but also serves our city. This past year, Marty and her staff completed more than 1,300 print jobs, resulting in 6.4 million impressions. In addition to processing more than 1,200 student records, the department also completed more than 2,500 requests for our alumni. It's also important to note that the Printing and Records Management Department oversees all of the external mail, as well as the internal mail, which we finally refer to as Andy Foley, who's here, but he's behind the scenes somewhere directing this School Board meeting, he directs our WHCS Television, which provides programming for three cable television stations. We have continued our commitment to both the Wired In and School Note shows. We debuted a new show last February called The High Five Show, which gives the Division more opportunities to recognize the accomplishment of our great students. One School Board Member visits students at the school and presents them with a reward certificate on camera. It's important to note that our shows not only are broadcast on the cable television, but we also show them on our website, YouTube channel, through Email Extra, through everyone's emails to our internal staff, and through Facebook and Twitter. The number on the screen indicates how many shows completed since July 1st of 2014. WHCS also produces special videos on a variety of topics and events, including fine arts, career and technology, and much, much more. As you know, our television crew supports the needs of the City of Hampton. This past year, we have covered almost 40 city events. In addition, we have produced more than 170 round robin shows in a year's time. In an effort to share more good news about our schools, students, and staff members, our Good News Initiative was born at the beginning of the 2013-14 school year. We set a goal of publishing six positive and/or informational stories per week. These stories were published on our website, Twitter, Facebook, and in HCS Email Extra. More than 250 stories were published in 2013-14, with almost 270 stories published in 2014-15 through HCS publicity avenues. We also developed Email Extra, which reaches about 11,000 subscribers on a weekly basis. Because there are more than 200 billion active users on Twitter, we established a Hampton City Schools account almost two years ago. About a year ago, we had 1,000 followers, and we found that we attract the most followers when the threat of bad weather may close school. We currently have more than 2,300 followers, and we have tweeted, or retweeted, about 4,400 times. We try to post a minimum of twice a day, but sometimes we post up to 10 times a day. We are currently working with our Principals and Schools to encourage school-based accounts. It is so exciting to see our teachers going on Twitter and not only showing the great things going on in their classroom, but participating in professional development and chats about teaching strategies. Okay, I'm probably going to get in trouble here because I don't know that she's here. But if I were to have our best principal tweeter, most of you know, it's Angela Byrd-Wright, who is the principal, everyone would agree to that, great. She is the principal at Lindsay Middle School, and this is a screenshot of one of her tweets. Been in a close second is Mark Hudson, the new principal at Phoebus High, who's here, right? He just recently established a presence on Twitter for Phoebus, and he actually had a great presence on Twitter when he was at Eaton as well. While she's doing that, I'm going to go on my next slide, and she'll catch up, hopefully, if the computer hasn't frozen on us. Hampton City Schools has quite a Facebook presence, thanks to the work of Carolyn Bowers and the media reps in our schools. About 3,700 people like our page. Multiple posts are made each day, and we are also encouraging our schools to establish a Facebook page. At this point, about 50% of our schools have some type of Facebook account, sharing pictures and other good news items on a daily basis. And here, I was going to show you a picture of some screenshots from our Facebook page. Is it just frozen up? Okay. And I was also going to brag about Phoebus High School, who recently set up a new Facebook account. We had kind of a Booster Club Facebook account that wasn't really our official Facebook account, but since Mr. Hudson has come onboard, he's put together an official Facebook account. He's doing a very good job with it. And I want to show you a video in a second, if we can get it to work, but before we do that, I want to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing in the future. When our contract with the company that provided the software for our autodialed calls expired this summer, HCS shifted its business to a new company, which resulted in saving us money, and it also has resulted in providing us with a mobile app. The app will be ready soon, and if I were able to show it to you, I'd show you a picture We are also in the completion stages of redesigning the HCS website. In addition to having a new look, our goal is to make it much easier to navigate and find what you need on the site. We will continue to expand our social media presence, focusing on the efforts of our schools. In addition, we plan to bring back the Hampton Herald, which is an internal newsletter. We are repurposing it, and we plan to publish it online in a magazine format with links to videos and other helpful resources for our staff members. Just a heads up that our School Board meetings will soon be available in high-definition through the Internet. And finally, we are working with new software that is giving us a much better idea of what is being said about our Division and our schools on traditional and social media. This gives us the opportunity to stay abreast of the various concerns and address those as appropriate. At this point, I was going to show you a short video that helps parents and other community members get connected to us, but it seems like we're having a technical glitch at this point, so I will take questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galata. Are there questions from Board Members or Ms. Galata tonight?
I have a question. Ms. Galata, with the HCS Email Extra, I think you indicated that you have 11,000 subscribers. Are these people, parents, students, staff, or do we have citizens who have access and will receive this?
Yes, and yes. We based our first group of emails in Email Extra were our employees. And then we went through Power School, and any parent who provided an email address, we were able to actually pull that out of Power School and put that into Email Extra. We have a link on the front of our website where anyone can sign up, and then Ann Bain has been gracious enough to come back from different community meetings that she's in and provide me with a list of folks who are very interested in our school division and want to know a little bit more about it. So we actually, Matt Hauser actually puts those in manually, and so we want as many people as possible to be on there and to receive that good news.
Mr. Samuels?
Hi. Do you have capabilities to filter tweets and posts from staff members, including teachers?
No, we don't have that ability. When a teacher, or anyone else for that matter, signs up on Twitter and is actually tweeting pictures from their school or pictures from their classroom, they're supposed to turn that information into either myself or Mr. Eagle. We don't have access to the passwords, but we follow, and, you know, our teachers really do a good job with Twitter, and they're, you know, 99% of the time, very appropriate. But if we see something that's questionable, I'll just make a phone call.
Thank you.
Other questions from Board Members? Like you're up again, did you want to show us?
Yeah, if it's okay.
That'd be great.
Okay. Hold on. Probably the next slide.
There are so many good things happening all around Hampton City Schools, and we are always looking for new and innovative ways to let you know about them. Check out all the different ways you can stay connected. Look for information on noteworthy accomplishments and happenings by watching Cox Cable Channel 46 and Verizon Fios Channel 20. You can see programs like School Notes, a news program which brings you the stories happening in our schools captured on video. Wired In connects viewers with people who are making a difference in our schools every day. The High Five Show brings School Board Members into our schools to personally recognize our students' achievements. School Board meetings are broadcast live each month, and you can watch them later as they are rebroadcast throughout the month. You can also watch a recorded broadcast as Hampton City Schools students are recognized at each quarter's Citizen of the Month luncheon in downtown Hampton. Watch WHCS anytime on our live streaming channel on the Internet. For on-demand viewing, we have an HCS YouTube channel. Just search for Hampton City Schools. Many of our productions can be found there. Find out why families choose Hampton City Schools by watching the I Choose Hampton City Schools campaign, produced in conjunction with the City of Hampton. You can keep up with us on social media as well. Like our Facebook page and see photos from many different schools and events. If you enjoy your information in 140 characters or less, follow us on Twitter at Hampton C Schools. You can get your news fast as it's happening. Sign up for Email Extra and have links to the latest news on the HCS website delivered straight to your inbox. The website has many resources for parents, students, and members of our community. You can watch the Every Child, Every Day video, which is full of information about our school district. There are links on the homepage to news stories with the latest information. Now that we've shown you just how easy it is to connect with Hampton City Schools, join us as we share all of the good things happening around our community.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Henry?
I guess just one more question. The app from the company that's not connected, what is it?
It's now called School Messenger.
School Messenger. And that's something that a parent can put the app on their phone, and that will get them direct access to that kind of message?
Yes, well, it will actually, it's sort of like taking our website and putting it on your phone, but we expect that you'll be able to see like the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, sign into the parent portal, and then also receive notifications. So if we have to close school because of bad weather, you can actually, on your phone, set it a certain way so that you actually get a message flash up on the front of your screen that says that school will be closed tomorrow. So it really gives us some great capabilities in communicating. And if you look at the research around the mobile device, many, many people have it, regardless of their economic background. It's something that in all kinds of communities, you are seeing very profound use of a mobile device, so I'm hoping that it really helps us reach more people.
So whether you have a landline or a cable at home, you'd have that app with you, and whether you're at work or wherever you are, you'll be able to know the latest important message from Hampton City Schools.
Absolutely.
That's really cool.
Excellent. Any other questions from Ms. Galata? Thank you so much for that report. Dr. Smith?
Yes, let me just make one final comment, if I may.
Of course.
Just saying, I think that based on the presentation, it's very clear in terms of the exceptional work. And so, I want to say to Ms. Galata and your staff, thank you for that. As we move to the next report, and that's the staffing update, and we'll invite at this time Mrs. Robin Ruth, Executive Director of Human Resources, who will share with us and provide the Board with an update relative to staffing at this point.
Good evening. It's August, so that means I'm here to give you all an update on staffing with teachers. It's going very well so far this year. Of the 1,450-ish teaching positions that we have, we've got about 1,410 of those filled, so we're doing well. Currently, we have still 10 classroom positions at the elementary level, 10.5 for Special Education, which is probably, right now, my biggest area of concern, 6 Language Arts, 3.5 Spanish, and 1.5 math positions. So, very excited about the math because this time last year, I think I was warning you that we wouldn't be able to fill all of our math vacancies, and I think we will absolutely be able to meet that goal this year. We do also anticipate filling the remainder of our positions this year. We've done some creative things with staffing this summer. We have conducted one virtual job fair. We had about 100 qualified candidates from outside, for the most part, from outside of the Hampton Roads area, and they had virtual interviews online with our administrators. We've hired 17 of those folks so far. We're having a second virtual fair, not next week, but the week after that, in the middle of August. So, I do anticipate, when I see you in a couple of weeks, that this number will be much smaller. Any questions?
Questions from Board Member? Okay, Ms. Ruth. Thank you so much. It does sound like we're in a great position, but I'm very surprised to hear that math number, so that's encouraging, for sure.
Yes, we are very excited about our math numbers.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Look forward to your next report. Dr. Smith?
Yes, also, Mrs. Robin Ruth will provide us information relative to our new members to the Hampton City Schools Administrative Team. As Superintendent, let me share, it's my pleasure to extend greetings to new members of the team that will be introduced at this evening's School Board meeting. We all know that effective leadership is essential to the work of teaching and learning, and critical to our mission of Every Child, Every Day, Whatever It Takes. And so, at this time, we'll have the introduction of our new administrative team members who have not been introduced to this day.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Or as of this day.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Tonight, I do have the privilege to introduce several folks who are moving into new roles within Hampton City Schools, and there are also some new faces to Hampton City Schools that you'll have the opportunity to meet tonight. We are very excited about the energy and talent that these individuals bring to their new positions. And so, some directions for those of you out in the audience, we don't normally do this, but because of the volume of folks that we're going to be introducing tonight, as I call your name, I'm going to be reading some information about you and your journey to your current position, and we're going to ask that you go ahead and come up on stage. And then, so yeah, sorry for those of you who... But that's so folks at home and the School Board also can have a better chance to see you. And then, if you all don't mind, we're going to save our applause till the end. All right, and first up, we have Ms. Anita Owens. Ms. Owens began her new role as the Executive Director of School Leadership when Dr. Cagiano was promoted to Deputy Superintendent. She has more than 27 years of educational experience, all in Hampton City Schools. She has served as the principal of Phoenix Pre-K 8 School since 2011, and prior to that, she served as a principal at Phillips Elementary, and she was also the Assistant Principal at Merrimack Elementary. She taught for 15 years at Robert E. Lee Elementary School and was recognized as the HCS Teacher of the Year in 2001. She is a graduate of Keketan High School and holds a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from Virginia State University, and a Master's Degree in Education and Educational Administration and an Educational Administration endorsement from Old Dominion University. And she is currently working on her Doctorate of Education from Virginia Polytechnic Institution and State University. So, we expect to have a new doctor in the house very soon. Actually, we expect to have a lot of new doctors in the house, as you will hear from these introductions. and State University. So we expect to have a new doctor in the house very soon. Actually, we expect to have a lot of new doctors in the house, as you will hear from these introductions. The next person I'd like to introduce is Whitney Kettledge. She is moving into the role of Director of Career and Technical Education. Jessie White will be retiring in October, and we've brought Ms. Kettledge on early, so she has a chance to spend some time with Jessie before he leaves. Whitney has nearly 10 years of experience, all of them in Hampton City Schools. She served as a Marketing Coordinator and Teacher at Kiketan High School since 2006. She has served as a CTE Department Instructional Leader since 2011. And in her roles at Kiketan, she has served as the Advisor for DECA and directed state and international competition series. She has a bachelor's degree in Occupational and Technical Studies with an emphasis in marketing education from Old Dominion University. She received a master's degree in career and technical education from Virginia Tech, and her licensure in educational leadership from ODU, and she is currently working on her doctorate degree in STEM education and professional studies from ODU. Next, Robin Hunk Crenshaw.
Is Robin here?
Oh, there she is. Sorry, I'm sorry, Robin. I'm sorry. All right. Robin has been named the Principal of Phoenix Pre-K 8. She's replacing Ms. Owens. She has been an Assistant Principal at Phoenix since 2011. She previously taught language arts at the 4th, 6th, and 8th grade levels for Hampton City Schools, and she was named the Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals' Assistant Principal of the Year during the 2013-14 school year. She has a bachelor's degree in liberal studies from Longwood University, a master's degree in English from Old Dominion University, and she holds a master's degree in education administration and supervision from the University of Phoenix. Next, we have Mark Hudson, who is returning to the home of the Phantoms. Mark is a graduate of Phoebus High School, and he has served most recently as the Principal of Eaton Middle School since 2010. He has more than 20 years of educational experience and previously served as the Principal of Spratley Middle School and Aberdeen Elementary School. He also served as an Assistant Principal at With, Armstrong, and Cary Elementary Schools. He began his teaching career at With. Mr. Hudson earned a bachelor's degree in Business Administration and Marketing from Howard University. He completed the teacher certification program at Norfolk State University and earned a master's degree in educational leadership from ODU. He is currently working on his doctorate degree in education leadership from ODU. Next, we have Michael Blunt Jr., and he has been named as the Principal at Sims Middle School. Now, Mr. Blunt is a new face to Hampton City Schools, and he has more than 10 years of educational experience. He is coming to us most recently from Suffolk Public Schools, where he served as an Assistant Principal at Lakeland and Kings Fork High Schools. And he has also served in the role as summer school high school principal. He is a previous math teacher and has served in leadership roles in Newport News Public Schools and Norfolk Public Schools. He has a bachelor's degree in computer engineering from Hampton University and a master's degree in educational leadership from Regent University. Next, we have Dr. Kelly Sido. She is also a new face to Hampton City Schools, and she will be serving as the Principal of Forest Elementary. She has 13 years of educational experience in Virginia Beach. She has served as the Assistant Principal at Fairfield Elementary School and also was a Title I Coordinator and Division Lead for School Improvement in Virginia Beach. She has also served as a literacy coach, academic coordinator, and elementary teacher. She holds a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies, a master's degree in elementary education, an education specialist degree in administration and supervision, and a doctorate degree in educational leadership from ODU. Next, we have Jennifer Humble. She has been promoted to serve as the Principal of Machen Elementary School. She has served the last two years as Assistant Principal at Cary Elementary School. She has also served one year as Assistant Principal at Asbury Elementary School. She started her teaching career at Langley Elementary in 2004 and served as the school's Language Arts Instructional Leader from 2009 to 2012. Ms. Humble has a bachelor's degree in elementary and early childhood education from Edinburgh University in Pennsylvania, and a master's degree in educational leadership from Old Dominion University. Next, we have Ashley Ide, and she is the new Principal at Burbank Elementary School. Ms. Ide has been an educator with Hampton City Schools for nearly 10 years, serving the past two years as Assistant Principal at Smith Elementary, and she also served as an Assistant Principal at Barron Elementary. Her experience includes serving as a Title I tutor and as a history and social science teacher for five years. She's also been a middle school social studies instructional leader and an elementary summer school coordinator. Ashley is also a graduate of Kiketan High School and holds a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in teaching history and social science from Christopher Newport University. She also holds a master's degree in educational policy, planning, and leadership from the College of William &amp; Mary. Next, we have Patrina Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins has been promoted to serve as the Principal of Smith Elementary School. She is making her return to the elementary ranks after some years in secondary. She has more than 24 years of educational experience, and she has spent the past years the Assistant Principal at Hampton High School. She previously served as an Assistant Principal at Bethel High School, Jones-Magnette Middle School, Spratley Middle School, and Barron Elementary. She's also taught language arts in Newport News Public Schools. She holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education with a middle school endorsement from ODU. She also holds a master's degree in education from Regent University, and an education specialist degree in administration and supervision from the George Washington University. She is currently in the Educational Leadership doctoral program at Nova Southeastern University. All right. Before I move to our Assistant Principals, I would like to introduce Glory Gill. She has been serving as the Health Services Coordinator since July 1st, and she has 35 years of nursing experience, including 13 years serving in the United States Air Force. And for the last 21 years, her focus has been on school nursing, including 11 of those years with Hampton City Schools. She has served as the nurse at Lee, Forest, and With Elementary Schools, as well as at Andrews Pre-K 8 and Sims Middle School. Ms. Gill holds a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from the University of Maryland and a Master's in Public Administration and Human Resource Administration from Valdosta State College. In 2012, she was named one of the top 10 medical professionals in Hampton Roads. Thank you, Glory, both for your service to our country and our children. And now, moving on to our Assistant Principals. First off, we have James Harris, who is a new, yeah, I'll squeeze on in. James Harris is the new Assistant Principal at Bethel High School. He began his full-time teaching career in 2009 at Hampton High and has served the last two years as the Instructional Leader of the Social Studies Department at Hampton High. He previously worked as a classroom management coach and an administrative intern. He is a graduate of Phoebus High School and was a Gates Millennium Scholar and Ambassador. He holds a bachelor's degree in history and a master's degree in teaching from Hampton University. He earned a certification in educational leadership and administration from the George Washington University. Steve Gavin is next, and he has been promoted to serve as an Assistant Principal at Phoebus. He has served the past three years as an Assistant Principal at Jones, and he also taught math and health and physical education. Mr. Gavin is a career switcher, a very successful career switcher with us, and he's received a bachelor's degree in health and physical education from Norfolk State University and a master's degree in education and human development from GW. Bryn Seer is also a new Assistant Principal. She will be serving at Andrews Pre-K 8 School. Last year, she served as an Assistant Administrator at Andrews, and this year she will be taking on the role of a full-fledged Assistant Principal. She began her teaching career at Langley Elementary School, where she taught for seven years. Ms. Seer is also a graduate of Kiketan High School and earned a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies from James Madison University. In May, she completed her master's degree in educational leadership from Old Dominion University as part of the Hampton City Schools cohort program. Next, we have Cara McCord. Ms. McCord has been promoted to serve as an elementary Assistant Principal. Like Ms. Seer, last year she served in the role of an Assistant Administrator at Burbank Elementary School. And this year, she will be serving as an Assistant Principal at Smith Elementary School. She began her teaching career in 2006 as a 4th grade teacher at Merrimack Elementary School. She also serves as a Title I math teacher and coach. Ms. McCord also is a graduate of Kiketan High School. She received a bachelor's degree in sociology from the University of Virginia and completed her Pre-K 6 licensure requirements at ODU. Also, she was a member of the ODU Administration and Supervision Cohort and completed her master's degree this spring. Our final new face to the Hampton City Schools administrative team is Sharif Hicks, and he has been hired as the new Assistant Principal at Bryan Elementary. Prior to joining Hampton City Schools, Mr. Hicks served as an administrator intern in Newport News. He has taught 4th and 5th grades and served as an instructional assistant at the early childhood level. He holds a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in elementary education from Hampton University. He earned an education specialist degree from ODU just this spring. And last, but certainly not least, is our most newly-minted Assistant Principal, and that would be Travis Humble. And I say that because he was on the personnel report tonight. So he is our most newly-minted Assistant Principal, and he will be joining the staff right here at Jones-Magnette Middle School. Mr. Humble has more than 10 years of educational experience, teaching at the elementary school level in New Orleans for a couple of years before coming to Hampton to teach at Langley Elementary School. Mr. Humble has also served as a science instructional leader, team leader, and summer school psych coordinator. He is also a lead teacher for the JSAT program at Thomas Jefferson National Lab. Mr. Humble has a bachelor's degree in education from Shadrone? Did I get it right? Shadrone, okay. State College, and received his master's degree in educational leadership from Old Dominion University in May as part of the HCS cohort. Now, I would like to invite everyone to give this fine group of administrators a warm welcome and round of applause. As administrators, we all know that a major factor in our success is the support we get from our family and friends. And so now, I would ask everyone who is here in support of one or more of the folks that are here on stage. Oriole Robinson-Taylor, I ripped right past your name. Come on up here. It's a good thing I turned around. I am so sorry. I just whizzed right on past your name. I am so sorry. Oriole Robinson-Taylor is proof that you cannot crush a crab. Ms. Robinson-Taylor is returning to crabber country as an Assistant Principal. She began her teaching career with HCS as a language arts teacher at Hampton High School in 1998, and after eight years in the classroom, she got the administrative bug and served as Dean of Students at Hampton for one year before becoming an Assistant Principal there. She has served as the Assistant Principal at Hunterby Andrews Pre-K 8 School since 2010, grooming baby crabs. And she is returning to Hampton High School, as I said. Ms. Robinson-Taylor is a graduate of Hampton High School, as well as she received her Bachelor of Arts in English and Secondary Education from St. Paul's College, a master's degree in educational administration and leadership from Cambridge College, and she is currently pursuing her PhD in educational leadership from Old Dominion University. Let's give Ms. Robinson-Taylor. All right. Now, as I was saying, it takes a lot of support from family and friends to be successful as an administrator. So if we can have anyone who is here to support one or more of our candidates, please stand up so we can give you a round of applause to say thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you. You guys can head on down. Congratulations to each of you, and on behalf of the school board, I want to thank you for accepting the challenge to work in our schools. And we know that, just from looking at this great group, that the children are going to be in great hands this coming fall, and so excited to see so many familiar faces. I'm not going to say old faces, they're familiar faces in the group and some really great new faces. Dr. Smith, of course, is the biggest new face in town. But we really are so pleased with this group of new administrators and so happy to see the excitement that's coming forth in this coming year. And one of the things I happened to note, as Ms. Ruth was sharing information about all the candidates, is that so many of you are connected with Old Dominion, and I think that speaks volumes to the great partnership that we've had with ODU and working with our cohort groups. And so my husband, who's a great big monarch, will be pleased to know those numbers as well. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you to the families for sharing your loved ones with us. Dr. Smith?
Yes, the next item then for the superintendent is that of asking Ms. Suzie Scott if she would come forward, our Deputy Superintendent of Operations and Support, and she will share her report at this particular time.
I have to admit, my report's pretty anticlimactic after that grand presentation of all these great new people we have to look forward to working with, so... But I'll try and make it exciting. Oh, absolutely. All right. Well, I am here tonight to present the results of our operations. Should I give it a second or just keep going? The results of our operations as of May 31st, 2015. We're almost to the end of the fiscal year from a reporting standpoint. Our revenues to date at that point were $179,71,968, and our expenditures and encumbrances were $177,374,395. The revenue is about $5.3 million, or 3.1% higher than the amount received during the same period of FY14, and the expenditures are approximately $4 million, or 2.3% above where we were for FY14. As you know, our budget was based on an estimated enrollment of 20,000 students. The final March ADM came in at 19,881 students, or 119 less than budgeted. Based on that, the final revenue is short by approximately $628,000 after all revenues were tallied. Overall, we are, the budget includes the $729,442 that we carried over from last year and which was used to fund the Enterprise Resource Planning project that we are currently in the middle of, really just getting warmed up on, but we're very excited about it. The report also includes budget transfers that occurred during the month of May into or out of Category 9, the majority of them being from Category 1 to Category 9. Some of them may look a little higher than normal. That's because at this time of year, departments are starting to spend down their budgets in preparation for either summer school and other summer programs or gearing up for the next school year. the next school year. The division leadership team also makes some large purchase decisions at this time of year. And just so you know how it works for year-end, this is August. You're probably wondering about June. We typically present our June financials in September. We actually are still closing out the FY15 fiscal year. We generally run through the end of July with recording revenue and expenditures and proper accruals in preparation for our audit. And so we are just now starting to close out the books for FY15, but by the September, first board meeting in September, we should have an unaudited preliminary report of the June final. So we will present it to you at that time. And with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Scott on her financial report? Not that it wasn't exciting.
I understand.
But it was so thorough that you left us with no question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Smith?
Yes. I want to say again, thank you to Ms. Scott. And at this particular time, I think that concludes the section for the superintendent staff reports, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We come to the portion of our meeting where we have the hearing of any delegation, a presentation of any written communications or petitions. Mrs. Bowers, do we have any?
No, we don't.
Okay. Thank you. There being none, we'll move on to items for action. We have six items on our action agenda tonight, beginning with the minutes of school board meeting July 15, 2015. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Smith that we approve item 5.01, the minutes of the school board meeting of July 15. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Stay.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 5.02 is the minutes of special school board meeting of July 22, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Smith and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we approve the minutes of the special school board meeting of July 22, 2015. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Stay.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 5.03 is the certification of the closed session of July 15. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Smith and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve the certification of the closed session for July 15. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Stay.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. The next three items are school board policy revisions, item 5.04, 05, and 06. Is there a motion to approve and block?
Madam Chair, I move approval of actions 5.04 through 5.06 as a block.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve items 5.04, which is the revision of school board policy IGAJ, Driver Education; item 5.05, which is the revision of school board policy IGAE and IGAF, Health and Physical Education; and the revision of school board policy FEG, Construction Planning. Is there any discussion? There being no further discussion, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on now to deliberation, and begin with item 6.01, which is the Declaration of Covenants at Forest Elementary School. We've had some level of explanation on this covenant prior to our meeting. Are there any questions for clarification? Okay. If not, we'll move on to the Declaration of Covenants at Burbank Elementary School. As well, we've had information provided to us on these covenants. Is there any further deliberation or questions regarding the covenant at Burbank?
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to make the one comment to make sure we check on the fencing around those wet ponds that they're putting in. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Moving on to item 6.03, which is the Virginia Public School Authority Resolution, the VPSA Resolution. Is there someone to speak to that, Ms. Reeves or Ms. Scott?
Ms. Scott for VPSA? Yes.
This is the annual resolution that we bring forward to enable us to spend funds out of our operating budget in advance of being reimbursed by the Virginia Public School Authority bond funding. That is, the bonds are usually sold in the spring of each year. We estimate that we will get $1,134,000. And then, of course, there is a match, a 20% match to that. The funding does include the e-Backpack funding, and the resolution is required in order to enable us to spend funding in advance of being reimbursed for it.
Any questions for Ms. Scott on the resolution? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move that forward to our action our next time. The final item on our deliberation tonight is item 6.04, 2020 Vision Strategic Plan. We had a completely separate meeting, special meeting, in order to discuss the plan. Are there comments or questions from board members regarding the revisions that took place following our meeting? Ms. Henry?
Well, of course, we've been having reports from Dr. Cooper for some time about the development of the strategic plan, and we were glad to get the input from Dr. Smith at our special meeting about that. And I just want to say that once this is approved on the action agenda at the next meeting, I really look forward to the continued involvement of the public in this process because not only is our staff and parents been involved, but other members of the public have been involved with the action, the formulation of the goals, and we really want to keep the public informed about our strategic plan and where it's going, and focus on things that are vital to this community. It's a living, breathing document, and it's the heart of the work that we do every day. And I'm just very impressed with the work that has been done so far.
Absolutely. Other questions or comments from board members on the strategic plan? Mrs. Smith?
I just wanted to make a comment that that separate meeting we had, it was rather extensive and a lot of detailed discussion. And I think, Dr. Cooper, I just got to thank you because you really pulled all of that together and did a wonderful job of incorporating all that. So thank you so much.
Other comments or questions from board members?
I want some interest in your statement that I'd like to make to Dr. Cooper's, the fact that you had so many community involvement and the transparency of the strategic plan. And as Ms. Henry said, it's a living, breathing document. And so, Dr. Cooper, I just want to say thank you and commend you for your efforts and your hard work in getting this thing, this strategic plan, done.
Any other comments or questions from school board members or either Dr. Cooper or Dr. Smith regarding the strategic plan? Thank you very much, Dr. Cooper. And most board members probably don't realize this, but I accidentally called Dr. Cooper off of her vacation to come for our meeting on the 22nd. So, it's a long story. But anyway, she has really risen to the occasion of this strategic plan and really done a fine job in guiding us through this process planning. And so, just a double commendation to you for making the travel back, for meeting with us to finally tighten up all the details on this. And I think it's really at a place where all the school board members are fully engaged in where it is and where it's going to go from here, and we feel very vested in it. And so, again, we're, I think, as you can tell from the comments from board members tonight, that we're very pleased with the final outcome of the plan and look forward to the work that's going to be done. We have a very clear plan and very clear objectives, and so I think it's a great document to work from. And I also, we didn't end the vision statement conversation on the 22nd, and you all tweaked that to its final state, and I think it's really great. I like it. Hampton City Schools is the first choice for success for every student, and I think that really captures things really well because, you know, when you're working in public education, you're working with children that come to us where they are, and we have to meet them at their point of need. And I think that vision statement really captures that, and this plan as well. So, enough said. We're pleased and happy and looking forward to moving forward with this document. We now come to deliberation first read, rounding out our agenda tonight, beginning with item 701, the revision of school board policy BBBC, Student Representative to the School Board. And we have, Ms. Reeves, will you speak to that revision, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. All of policies in Section B are board policies, so these are ones that I handle on your behalf. The recommendation with regard to BBBC is to change the word liaison to representative, and that is because the legislature has changed it in the Virginia Code, and it's now representative and not liaison. So that is the recommendation. There's also some minor edits here with respect to taking everything out of the shell and simply taking it into the present form.
Any questions for clarification on a policy BBBC? Okay, we'll move on to BBBB, which is School Board Member Oath of Office. Ms. Reeves?
The recommendation is, of course, to change references to the Virginia Code, which need to be properly amended. And we are, I'm also recommending that you pick up exactly how the Virginia School Board Association policy reads with respect to taking the oath prescribed and when it needs to be taken. Theirs seem to be very clear, and I'm recommending that we adopt their entire paragraph as your new policy.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Reeves on this policy revision? We'll move on then to policy BBFA, Conflict of Interest.
I know that you changed this in June, but that was as a result of an earlier change to the Virginia Code. The legislature, the most recent meeting of the General Assembly actually made some recommendations that there be far more details included with respect to gifts and what a gift was and a description of what a gift is, and members who can receive the gift and how much. Obviously, all as a result of the most recent court case. So these amendments are being recommended, so it's absolutely clear what is a gift and what, under conflicts of interest, both employees and board members can accept.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Reeves on the conflict of interest policy changes? There being none, we'll move on to BG, no, BCG, sorry, School Board Attorney. And Ms. Reeves, you can certainly speak to this policy revision.
All we're doing is recommending deletion of a particular reference to the Virginia Code, as that section doesn't directly pertain to employment of the school board attorney. The rest of the language I'm recommending stays the same.
Any questions for Ms. Reeves on this policy change? And Ms. Reeves, your final policy to review with us is BDC, Closed Meetings.
Yes. And as a result of cybersecurity concerns, in paragraph 12, there are some additional provisions of the FOIA that allow you to go into closed session with regard to cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities, so that's now been added.
Any questions for Ms. Reeves on this particular policy revision? Okay. There being none, we'll move on to our final school board policy for review tonight on first read. It is policy IBEA. And Mr. Eagle is here to speak to us about this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is just part of our maintenance, regular biennial review. As you're aware, technology policies require a review every two years, so this is part of that review. Looking at some of the language, it's amazing sometimes how technology goes out of date so quickly. So we made some changes there. You can see that in some of the technology terminology that we used, referenced in the second paragraph in regards to text messages, as you're aware. People now message all kinds of things other than text. And there was a clarification review. It wasn't really clear why we had the word deleted, because this applies to all files, not files that have just been deleted. And then finally, in paragraph number five, again, we provided some clarifying language just to make it more streamlined, referring to all of those various kinds of media as social media, as opposed to trying to name each kind.
Any questions for Mr. Eagle regarding the proposed revisions? Ms. Smith?
Isn't, is there also a mirrored policy for this one?
There is. The staff policy, GGBDC, I believe it is, was done back in, I think it was March.
And it's not really a mirror policy.
Yeah, that's correct.
Many of the pieces and parts are the same, but it's not a true mirror policy because there are different expectations for adults than for students.
Okay. I know when I looked at it, it had some of this language that's getting changed in this one, but I guess it's not an immediate thing.
Yeah, so these are both acceptable use policies. But for example, this one references language in regards to our legally mandated internet filter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eagle. That concludes our deliberation first reads for tonight. We'll move on to informational items. My computer will come along with me. My computer is not moving, but I do know that our next school board meeting will be a work session on August 19 at 6:30 PM at Rupert Sargent Building. Dr. Smith, any informational items?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to share with you that, of course, we concluded today the Summer Leadership Academy, which was held on Monday, August 3, through, of course, today on the 5. And some of those sessions included Motivation 101, Leading the Change in Collaboration, Creating a Culture of Hope, Getting to Academic Excellence for Every Student, Making a Visible Impact with Action Research, Getting It Done in Terms of Leading Academic Success, Turning Crazy Bad Conversations into Good Conversations, and Setting Your School Climate Building Capacity in Terms of Family Engagement and Ambassadors for Your School and Hampton City Schools in General. And so, those were the concurrent sessions, just some of the concurrent sessions, on Monday. And then, of course, on Tuesday, sessions on school improvement planning, performance-based assessments, and today, Special Education Prof. assessments, and today, special education professional development, and also a session on the revitalization of our professional development communities. So it was exceptional in terms of the work of the staff members and all of the leaders for the Summer Leadership Academy. And so I think we're well on our way as it relates to the opening of school. And then other informational items that I'd like to share, and that is Summer School graduation will be, of course, tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Bethel High School. And the GED and External Diploma Program graduation will be Saturday, August 8th at 10:00 AM at Hampton High School. So that concludes some general information and the exciting times here in Hampton City Schools. So thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Other items for information from board members? Mr. Harper?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mugler. Recently, I had foot surgery, and I'd just like to thank all the members of the community, especially the board, who sent me cards and prayers to help me through my recuperation. I'm still recuperating, and you can ease up on them cards a little bit, but increase the prayer because prayer is powerful, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. And we are pleased to have you back at our meetings with us. Other items for information from board members? Anything from our student representative? Have we voted on that policy yet? No, we're getting ready.
After this meeting, I have something to present to you.
Great. I think that concludes our business tonight. If there's nothing further to come before this board, then this meeting is adjourned.